Well, good evening everybody. It's always a thrill to recognize some of our local youth for achievements and whatnot. So tonight we have Katie Rogers. I know some of you know who she is, but Katie, why don't you come on up? You may not recognize Katie without her camera, but she takes photos and writes stories for some of the local papers, and she's much more than that. She started drawing portraits in the eighth grade, and she's developed into a very talented artist. We'll come back to that topic later. But Katie is an excellent representation of the talent, the homegrown talent that we have here in our city. She's a lifelong Everett resident. She's actually fourth generation Everett. And she's a 2010 Everett High School grad. She graduated from Montserrat College of Art in 2014. And to her credit, Bryan Cranston of Breaking Bad and Tom Felton of the Harry Potter films, better known as Draco Malfoy, both own copies of her works. So that is why we're here tonight, to honor her artistic achievements. First, with the rededication of the Shute Memorial Library. She had a number of sketches on hand for display, I think it was by a collection called Neighborhood. Some of the folks who she's grown up with, and it's tremendous work. The second, as well, is if one isn't enough, she was just recently selected one of five individuals out of a nationwide competition of over 100 entrants to create a large piece at the Spring 2015 Boston Calling Music Festival at Boston City Hall Plaza. So that's just an amazing achievement. We wanted to wish her well, and her city is very proud of her and wanted to recognize her accomplishments. So I'm just going to read the citation, if you don't mind. Reads Everett, Massachusetts, City Council, his honor the mayor. Citation: "Be it hereby known to all that, the Everett City Council and his honor the mayor hereby offer their sincerest congratulations to Katie Rogers in recognition of," and we have both the display of your artwork and sharing of your artwork and your talent with the community at the rededication at the Shute Memorial Library, "and being selected to create and display artwork at the Spring 2015 Boston Calling Music Festival at Boston City Hall Plaza. The entire city government extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued good fortune given this 22nd day of June 2015, signed by our city clerk, Michael Materazzo, proposed by council president Fred Capone and the entire Everett City Council." Congratulations. Would you... Now Katie, I know you have some folks here. Did you want to say a few words, introduce the family? And then we'll have a group shot with the council over here after. You don't have to if you don't want to, but if you want to, it's an opportunity. So I'll step out of the way, and I'll let you say a few words.
Thank you so much for honoring me with this award from the city. A lot of my work is inspired by the people in my community, so it's an honor to have been noted for that. I'm here tonight with my mom, Patricia, my dad, Thomas, and my grandmother Ruth, and all of them are from Everett as well.
Wonderful. Well, your city is very proud of you, and I'm sure your family is as well, and we're just glad that we can share in these achievements, and I'm sure we're going to see many more to come.
Thank you.
So any of the family members want to come on up? We'll take a picture with the entire city council over here behind the rostrum, and we'll go from there. Katie's grandmother worked in the city clerk's office, I believe, 29 years?
That's right.
So unbelievable. So the family is deeply entrenched in the city. Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing her with us, and have a good night. Congratulations. Clerk call the roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Here.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Here.
Counsel Sichetta.
Here.
Counsel Sani.
Here.
Counsel Simonelli.
Present.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven members present, Mr. President.
Eleven members present. You have a quorum. We have already shown due respect at the flag, so we'll move right into the first item of business. Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a comment. I know last week, unfortunately, I was not able to be here. As you said, I was under the weather, but fortunately, a little over a week ago, I had an appendix problem. I had my appendix taken out, so I was actually up in the Wood and Hospital all last week. But I want to thank everybody for the phone calls and concerns, and I'm on the road to recovery, but just want to thank everybody.
It's nice to see you back in the chamber. I didn't want to give away too much information. I didn't know what you wanted me to say, but it's nice to see you back in the chamber, Mike. So the clerk will read the first item of business.
First item of business, Mr. President, is a public hearing. Twelve persons' interest in the public hearing to revoke flammable licenses at these locations per approval by property owners, 285 Second Street, 98 Bow Street, 404 Third, 158 Chelsea, 30 Commercial Street, 160 Broadway, 28 Henderson Street. These locations are no longer required to have a license.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second. It's been moved in second to open to a public hearing. So, members of the audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Members of the audience, I'm going to ask three times if there's anyone in favor on this piece, and I'll close that portion of the hearing, and I'll ask three times if anyone opposed, and we'll close that portion of the hearing. So, is there anyone in favor of this piece? Is there anybody in favor of this piece? Is there anybody in favor of this piece? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'll ask three times if anyone's opposed. Is anyone opposed to this piece? Is anyone opposed to this piece? Is anyone opposed to this piece? That portion is closed. Public hearing is now closed. The matter is before you, Counselis... Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes. Just clearing up, is it just a change of businesses that they no longer need these license?
If I may...
Mr. Clerk.
The... A lot of places, when they stop having flammables on their property, they like to keep the license because it makes their value higher. These property owners chose to have it removed altogether. So they no longer have the flammables, and they chose to no longer have the flammable license to go with the property. It goes with the property, so...
Fable action?
Moved in second, fable action. Clerk call the roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven ayes, zero nays.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order.
Mr. President, if we could... If I may, Mr. President, I just want to thank the assistant clerk. She went back on all these old properties and went back to the 1920s, and she's the one who found all these, and she did a great job on it.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, if we could draw the order and take number three.
It's been moved.
No, we have to open public participation.
We can go back to that. We can go back to that, yeah.
Yeah, we can go back.
Is there a second on the motion?
Yeah.
Second.
It's been moved in second, suspend the rules, and take item number three. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No. You got to take public participation.
No, that's all right. We can go back to public participation.
We can go back to it. We can make sure that we don't miss it.
We don't have a second. Nobody's standing.
Clerk read item number three.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Fred Capone's presence, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. Hereby promote Robert Casella to the position of captain of the Everett Fire Department.
Fable action on the order?
It's moved in second, fable action. Clerk call the roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order, and you have confirmed Mr. Casella to the rank of captain. Congratulations.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I, Robert Casella.
I, Robert Casella.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform...
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a captain of the Everett Fire Department.
As a captain of the Everett Fire Department.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
The city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Will support the Constitution.
And will support the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
United States of America.
The United States of America.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God. So help me God. Can I ask Bob's dad, Bob Casella, to come up and present with his badge?
So moved, chief.
We're going to take these collectively, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I make a motion. We take four through 10 collectively.
Is there a second?
Read the name.
Is there a second on that?
Yes.
It's been moved in second to take items four through 10 collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The clerk will read items four through 10.
Item number four is an order sponsored by Counsel Fred Capone's presence, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. Hereby appoint Joshua Doian to the position of firefighter in the Everett Fire Department.
Fable action on the order?
Number five, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Donald Maloney to the position of firefighter. Item number six, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Richard Costanza to the position of firefighter. Item number seven, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Wilson Jamillo to the position of firefighter. Item number eight, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Robinson Tran to the position of firefighter. Item number nine, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint John Gardner to the position of firefighter. And item number 10, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Seth McCullough to the position of firefighter in the Everett Fire Department.
Any more action on the order?
Counsel Hanlon.
Take action.
Second. And record... Well, if there's no objection, we'll take that collectively in one vote and record it accordingly. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. You have ordered... You passed the order, and you have confirmed.
If...
Yep. If we could have... We're going to have each of you up in a group, and we're going to sway you in. First, we have Joshua Doian. Donald Maloney. Richard Costanza. Wilson Jeremiel. Robinson Tran. John Gardner. And Seth McCullough. Congratulations.
Gentlemen, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a firefighter for the city Everett Fire Department.
As a firefighter for the city Everett Fire Department.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You just come over to this desk over here first.
Congratulations. He's trying to push his chair over. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations to the other one person. Congratulations.
Chief, they had pretty good harmony. You might want to start thinking about some sort of acapella group or something.
They look like high school acapella.
We'll take a group photo at some point, and then we'll take a little bit of a break. We'll allow the families an opportunity to take pictures with their family members after the fact. Absolutely. Hereby appoint Joshua Doian to the position of firefighter in the Everett Fire Department.
Favorable action on the order.
Number five, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Donald Maloney to the position of firefighter. Item number six, subject confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Richard Costanza to the position of firefighter. Item number seven, subject confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Wilson Jamillo to the position of firefighter. Item number eight, subject confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Robinson Tran to the position of firefighter. Item number nine, subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint John Gardner to the position of firefighter. And item number ten, subject confirmation by the Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Seth McCullough to the position of firefighter in the Everett Fire Department.
Favorable action on the order.
Counselor Hanlon. And record, well, if there's no objection, we'll take that collectively in one vote and record it accordingly. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Dela Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Apolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sachata.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You have ordered, you passed the order and you have confirmed. If, yep, if we could have, we're going to have each of you up in a group and we're going to swear you in. First, we have Joshua Doian. Donald Maloney. Richard Costanza. Wilson Jeremiel. Robinson Tran. John Gardner. And Seth McCullough. Congratulations.
Gentlemen, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a firefighter for the city Everett Fire Department.
As a firefighter for the city Everett Fire Department.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Everett.
To the city of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Can you just come over to this desk over here first? Chief, they had pretty good harmony. You might want to start thinking about some sort of acapella group or something. We'll take a group photo at some point and then we'll take a little bit of a break. We'll allow the families an opportunity to take pictures with their family members after the fact.
Yeah, I think it's... With that many? Yeah.
We'll take a five-minute recess to allow the families to take photos. If any family members would like to take pictures, we're now going to present the badges. Josh Doian.
Josh. Josh's family?
They're working their way through.
All right.
Yeah, go ahead, sit down.
Let Josh do his family first. Yeah.
Donald Maloney.
Donald Maloney, DJ. Yes, yeah, the important job. Absolutely, that's what it is.
Rich Costanza.
It's, uh, Rich Costanza. There you go. Will they give those to you?
Yeah, I get it.
I did.
Rich Costanza.
Hurry up, Richie.
Wilson Jeremiel. Robinson Tran. Jack Gardner. Seth McCullough.
How's it going, representatives?
Deputy, I'm Jerry McCullough, Seth's dad. Thank you very much for taking the floor.
We're going to, Casella will do the diamond number dot.
Do what?
I'm going to have Casella do the chief in that favor.
We all have this.
Casella with you in the...
Okay, the city council meeting will reconvene. I'd like to recognize our state Senator Saldeed Domenico and our state rep Joe McGonigal in the audience tonight. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Please wish our Senator Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday, Mr. Senator.
Seriously?
All right. The chair will accept the motion to open public participation. Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moved up, public participation. Is there anybody in the audience who has anything they'd like to say? If there's nobody in the audience, the chair will accept the motion to close public participation. Move the second to close public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number two.
Item number two is an order sponsored by Council Frey Componers President. City accepts the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter thirty-nine, Section twenty-nine D. Twenty-three D, sorry. Which allows for a board or commission member to be absent for not more than one hearing where testimony or evidence is presented so long as said absent member certifies in writing that he or she has examined all the evidence received at the missed session, which evidence shall include an audio or video recording of the missed session or transcript.
Given, given the nature of this, the chair would determine this is not routine. So the, the proper action at this point would either be to lay it over or to refer to committee, whatever the pleasure of the council is.
Lay it over to the next meeting?
It's been moved, it's been moved second to lay this item over to the next meeting in August, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk read the next item of business, item number eleven.
Item number eleven, order sponsored by Council Frey Componers President. Order positioning the great general court for the creation of community enhancement fee stabilization fund.
For the same reasons, we could either lay this over on the table or send it into a committee, whichever the... And I would ask on, on each of the pieces, anything that's laid over, if we could, we could have the administration provide a detailed explanation of what's sought, and that way we'd be ready to vote on it in the August meeting. So I'll put that, if we have that in the form of a motion. It's been moved in second to lay item eleven over till the next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number twelve.
Item number twelve is an order sponsored by Frey Componers President. Chief of Chairman obviously by granted permission to accept and dispose of a described list of six vehicles with VIN numbers, year, problem, and estimated value.
Fable action?
Yeah, unless there's any objection, I, I see this as a routine matter. It's been moved in second, favorable action, clerk call the roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have granted permission. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen, order sponsored by Council Frey Componers President to transfer forty thousand dollars to the mayor's salary account into the mayor's advertising account. This year there have been increased costs of the advertising line item, which pays the advertising cost for the entire city.
Fable action, yada?
Chair will accept the motion to suspend rule thirteen, and she does see this as routine as well. Move in second to suspend rule thirteen, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Suspend rule thirteen, on the piece itself?
Fable action on the order?
Move in second, favorable action, clerk call the roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi. Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have granted the order. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen, our order sponsored by Council Frey Componers President to transfer two hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred dollars from the mayor's reserve account to the following city accounts. This transfer is necessary to fund personnel services in various departments mainly due to the settlement of the FY fifteen union contracts in each of these departments. Auditor salary thousand, purchasing salary a thousand dollars, assistive salary account twenty-seven hundred, registrar salary account nine hundred, police salary account seven thousand, fire salary account a hundred and seventy-five thousand, E nine-one-one salary account nineteen thousand two hundred, city services salary account sixty-four thousand, health salary account nine hundred dollars, planning salary account one thousand dollars, veterans salary account five hundred dollars, humid services salary one thousand dollars, for total of two hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred dollars.
Motion to suspend rule thirteen.
Move in second, suspend rule thirteen, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed? On the piece?
I just have a quick question, either for the chief of staff or the city solicitor. Either one.
If you could please have the chief...
Second.
Move in second, have chief of staff before us. Melissa Rodriguez, Mayor Di Maria's Chief of Staff. Through you, Mr. President, to the chief of staff. These, these, all these contracts, they're all settled now, or are they...
There are still some contracts outstanding, some that are being ratified as we speak, but the items that you're seeing here are for contracts that have been ratified.
Okay, and, and the police, they were ratified?
One of the unions was ratified and one wasn't, correct? None of public safety have voted yet.
Okay, so no, nothing's passed as of yet?
For public safety, but for a local twenty-five, which is mostly what you're seeing here other than fire, um, yes.
Okay. And firefighter, the firefighters have not...
Right, so the police salary that you're seeing here is actually for the local twenty-five employees, the clerical employees, not for policemen.
Thank you. And the fire salaries are for...
The fire salaries is different, the fire salaries, and I, Rich may be better at clarifying why he has the one seventy-five here if he doesn't mind.
Take a motion to invite Mr. Visque.
Second.
Move in second to have Rich Visque before us. Rich, if you could please identify yourself as well for the record.
Richard Visque, City Auditor.
Thank you, I just wanted an explanation of, ah, one hundred and seventy-five.
That was just the breakdown of, I, I think we've come to terms in principle on the contract that's waiting for ratification, we're assuming it's gonna be voted as such, and we just want be in the last meeting of the fiscal year, we wanna move that money and have it there, so when they ratify, we can pay the retroactive wages.
Thank you very much.
Fable action?
Excuse the cuss, Mary, thanks.
Fable action on the piece?
Move in second, favorable action, clerk call the roll, this is item number fourteen.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you've passed the order. Clerk read the next item of business, item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen is communication from Mr. Paratash Patel, owner of Route ninety-nine Smoke Shop requesting leave the withdraw without prejudice on his early request for extended hours of operation.
Accept communication, place on file.
Move in second to accept communication?
Yes. If I made on the communication, do you have the, the existing hours which he agreed to?
He's withdrawing it.
He's withdrawing it, what were his present hours?
I think, I, I believe it was, ah...
It was five.
Till eleven o'clock, five to eleven?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
That's what it was when he came to us, and then I think he wanted an additional hour. He wanted twenty-four hours, but then we said no.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that it's not the four to eleven, you know, so, four to, the one to four, you know. Accept the communication, favorable action, second, third.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm reading the letter, and it says, he says, I want the city council to know that I am withdrawing without prejudice. He cannot withdraw without prejudice, you know? It's up to the city council to give him leave to withdraw without prejudice, you know? And my recommendation is that we do not do that. I think we should just vote on the item, vote no, that he does not have those hours. Voting without prejudice means that we're not opposed to what he wants to do come later on, I want him to know that I am opposed to him having these hours. So I would like to not accept this letter and to take his license, his request for extended hours and vote on it this evening.
The, the only, the only thing on that is this, this is just a communication that's in front of us, the piece is actually in the committee. I'm gonna defer to our clerk, 'cause there's a lot that's happened with this piece. I just wanna make sure that, that I'm accurate, if not, if you could just clarify for us. We've got a communication in front of us, so accepting the communication, putting it on file is of no impact.
Has no impact on the piece itself, he's just requesting. You could refer this to attach it to the piece? And, and, and keep it in committee if you'd so desire.
Was it in committee?
It's in committee now, yeah.
It was.
So whatever the desire of the council is, we could accept the communication, we could append it to the piece, it's in committee if you wish.
I'd like the exact hours, probably, so...
What do you want?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not sure at what the, what the purpose would be for leaving it in committee. The committee has not reported it out, but we can ask that it comes out. And so I'm gonna do that now, and make a motion that this item be taken from the committee and placed before the board tonight.
Well, second, I, yeah, we, we, I don't think we can do that.
Yes, we can.
Because I think it would violate open meeting laws.
It's not on the agenda to, to be voted before, I know what you could, you could...
New chatter.
If you could, you could have it...
But draw my motion.
Yeah, right.
You're right, you're right.
Counsel Palatano.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I believe the correct motion would be to accept the communication, communication, place it on file, refer it to the appropriate committee, so the committee can then act on it and, and refer it back to the body with the appropriate motion.
You're correct, counsel, is there a second on that?
And it does again it hours.
Move, moved in second, accept the communication and send it to the proper committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All, all opposed. So moved, it's, it's gone to the committee, it's no longer in front of us. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number sixteen. Counsel Mangan.
Mr. President, before we... Before we get there, it looks like I know on, I don't know if it's twenty-six, twenty-four, Counsel Sichetta has something, it's the same exact thing, one's, is a resolution, and this is a, the communication, so I don't know if we possibly take them at the same time, or...
Well, depends on what the council wants to do, I, it...
I don't know, it's the same exact thing, that's okay with me.
Can we take item number sixteen, number twenty-four collectively?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to take items number sixteen and item number twenty-four collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, we're taking sixteen and twenty-four collectively.
Item number sixteen is a communication from Mr. Lester Moravitz, DBA of Car Services, with a request to place a ban on Uber and our related companies until they abide in forward compliance with our tax and delivery ordinances. The item number twenty-four is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Salvatore Sichetta that City of Everett ban Uber, Lyft, sidecar, any other type of ride for hired vehicle that's not licensed by the city, as we license all cabs in the city, those cabs for hire that operate without license nor have to abide by our rules and regulations.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes, I imagine you all must have got the letter from Lester Moravitz. And the fact is, I read it in the papers a number of times in Boston, they're having a lot of trouble with these Uber drivers. In one case, I believe a passenger was molested and so on and so forth. Beyond that, these taxi cab drivers or whatever, they don't have to carry the insurance that all taxi cabs have to have, they don't have to live up to any ordinances we have in our books, they don't have to have an inspection by the police department, and that's why I say we should ban them until they are under our ordinances and inspected. So I wish that we send this to the city solicitor to ban these from our city until that takes place. Thank you.
Is there a second on the motion? Okay, it's been moved in second on that motion. Counsel DeFlorio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if this can be done, because unfortunately the Uber drivers don't have to register in the City of Everett, they can register anywhere, they can register in Malden, they can register in Boston, I don't know how you stop them from coming into the city. I agree with the good counselor, but I think it goes beyond that, so I don't know, maybe this is something that needs to be discussed in the committee, but I don't think you can do it. Unfortunately, like I said, they can register anywhere. They don't have to register in the city, so how do you stop someone from driving someone somewhere if they don't have to register in the city? So I believe this is beyond, I think they should go to the state, maybe we, I, I don't wanna go against the, ah, good council, but maybe it's something they should go to the state, so not...
And I think, I think right now the, I think right now the state legislature is, or is it City of Boston, some, someone is working on a statute on this, 'cause we had a piece in earlier and we kinda held it off to wait and see what they did, and then we can jump on that. Counsel Marquezzi.
Yeah, you're never going to stop it, because people just gonna get on their phones and press a button, I mean, I've had it, they've taken it before, I mean, take your cabs in, I've taken it, it's a fantastic thing, that's, I, I think it's gonna be hard time, first to vote on it, we can tell people not to order it. We can say we're, you know, I mean, do show you displeasure, but there's a lot of people that like taking it, so I'm really not gonna get in the middle of something that seems to work. If there's a problem, let, let the state figure out what their regulations wanna do with it, and, you know, that's...
Counsel Palatano.
Thank you, can we ask the city solicitor to come up? There you go.
That's the pleasure of the council?
Yes. Second.
If you could please have the city solicitor before us.
Yes. Second.
If you could please have the city solicitor before us. Colleen, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record. And is, is this, this something that you're prepared to speak to, because under the chatter you are entitled to seven days, if you need more time, or if you would prefer to get back to a certain opinion for the next meeting, whatever you prefer.
Sure.
So we'll defer to you on that.
Colleen Mahia, City Solicitor. I know that the state is, is, this is in committee in the state, and they're working on some sort of regulations for this. I know that other cities and towns have placed bans on these types of car services. I, I don't necessarily think because they've done it that it's, it's the right thing to do, that it's legal, that it's constitutional. So if you wanna refer to my office, I gladly take a look at it and also follow the, the state, the state's committee.
Thank you, are there any other questions?
Uh, no, actually, Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what I was hoping that we would hear from the city solicitor.
Do we have questions, are we good? All right, let me move down my list and see who had the hand up first. Counsel Hanlon, you had your hand up, but are you good? Counsel Hanlon? Do you have any questions?
No, no, yes, I will, I'll just make, make a comment. I was reading some information here too. Braintree, the City of Braintree has restricted them from coming into their town, and the East Hampton has also done the same thing. The, the point that I wanna make out is that we're not opposed to these people operating, we're just opposed to them not operating safely. They need proper automobile inspections, they need insurance on their automobiles. Right now, the insurance that they're carrying is the insurance that the owner of the vehicle owns, which is like the same insurance that I have on my car, which is not the proper amount of insurance to have if, if gonna have a vehicle for hire. You need extra insurance for that. So that's what I'm saying, and, and, you know, these guys wanna be in service and, and do their job, if they're up to date and up to par and regarding all the rules and regulations that they have, I'm fine with that, but I, I sort of agree with, I don't know what we're gonna do with this, but I sort of agree with not having them around for a while.
Counsel Mangan, you're next, do you have a question for our solicitor?
No.
Okay, I'll, we'll hold on to you, then Counsel McKinnon, do you have a question for the solicitor?
Yes, she had mentioned, you had mentioned that there was legislation that was coming out, or, do you have an idea of when that, what timeframe?
I, I don't, and the mayor just informed me too that the MAPC is also working on this, so there will be information forthcoming, I'm sure, in the next few months.
I mean, just as a suggestion, we should probably lay it over until we have something back or carry it over, make it maybe in a committee or something to that effect.
Well, the, the motion on the floor is to refer to the city solicitor with a request for an opinion for our next meeting, which would be August, so it would still be on the table for us next, next meeting. I, I still have Counsel Mangan, if, are you all set, counsel?
Thank you.
Have Counsel Mangan question for the solicitor?
No, just added.
Okay. Counsel Simonelli?
No.
Okay, are we all set? Any other questions for our guest? Thank you very much, Colleen. Okay, so Counsel Mangan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I'll hardly agree with Counsel Sichetta, I mean, I understand, you know, there are individuals here and there trying to make a living on, you know, using the Uber, but is Counsel Hanlon said, it's like I said, it's having the proper insurance and everything else and things like that, and, I mean, you're, you're taking people back and forth all over the state, or, you know, to the airport and everything else, and to me, to not have the same insurance as somebody that has like a, you know, the, the service, whether it's a taxi service or something like that, I don't agree with that, but I also think that this is something that, right now, I'm not comfortable, like I said, you know, allowing people just to come in, I mean, I don't know what, Mr. President, I mean, would I be under this, would I be able to just, if Counsel DeFlorio called me up and said I need a ride to the airport, would I, would I be, under the same thing, would I be able to just pick her up and take her to the airport and say, give me twenty dollars? That's what I'm saying, if there's no...
I don't think there's any regulation, so...
Right, that's what I mean, so, I mean, I think we have to have these regulations and stuff, and so I wholeheartedly agree, I mean, I, I agree with Counsel Palatano about getting, you know, getting some more information and getting an opinion from the, from the city solicitor, but at this time, like I said, I can't, you know, I can't support having the Uber people driving around, and like I said, without having some type of, you know, watchdog on them to make sure that they're doing the right thing, so I, I would, I would even just go far as to, you know, if you would allow me to, I'd love to go on as a co-sponsor to, to Counsel Sichetta on this, on his piece.
If you, if you were doing the Uber thing, you might have to pick up Counsel Delasola at his condo.
That got me into trouble, don't go there.
All right, I had Counsel Simonelli.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes, on this communication, I don't, just, not for nothing, but I don't know why Mr. Moravitz has to have put this on the calendar, because, you know, he, he has a cab company in Everett, okay? He has Everett Car Service here, but it's really Malden Car Service, and he should be, the way he is up there, twenty years he's been here, never been this man, I'm not against this, this, this guy, but for twenty years he's been running this cab system in Everett, and he has a lot that we decide, decided with his company, never mind putting a ban on someone else's company, you know, and I just wanna make, I think we should invite Mr. Moravitz up here at an, at a next meeting, or put it in the committee, and have him explain what's going on with him. His, he, with his Everett Car Service. I seen like one car in the Everett, Everett cab, this, I seen like a... I seen like one car in the Everett, um, Everett, uh, cab, I seen like, uh, twenty of them Malden. But, you know, I, I take the cabs a lot, you know, I'm not getting on this guy, but I think we do need another cab service. And, and this Uber, whatever they are, you know, they're trying to make the money too, but, I mean, monopolies, this guy is, I don't know, I really don't know him that well, but I just had to say that, because, I mean, no one else is saying it.
No, thank you, thank you, Counsel. In fairness to Mr. Morvitz, I think he's basically just, uh, expressing a concern that he's in a business that's regulated and he's competing with a business that's not regulated, and he just wants to bring that to the attention of the council. Uh, we've got the pieces, we still have a couple of counselors. Counselor Napolitano, did you, you have something you wanted to say?
Actually, that's, that was actually the point I'm making. This is on here because he, as a Everett business operator, uh, is communicating to us. That's why, uh, it's under communications. Now, if every time a business owner or a resident sends us a communication, we see that fit to open the door to now critique them on other matters that unrelated to their communication, we're setting a dangerous precedent here. Let's not go down that road. If the good counsel has an issue with, um, with this particular owner, then put a separate piece on the calendar, let's address it on that situation. In this case here, we have a communication from, from a business that is regulated, that's raising a question about unregulated competition. We already know that it's high profile, we already know the state's working on it, we already know that the, uh, there are other entities in the state that are working on it. Let's get a ruling, let's get, let's have our city solicitor give us a legal ruling on this as far as what is going on, what's, what, how it currently plays into, into, uh, the situation, before we go ahead and just blindly put in a bland ban. I mean, I, I agree with Counselor Sachetta. If there's competition here, they're unregulated, we should definitely ban it. But let's get all the legal information in, in, in place first, then let's make the decision based on legal issues and legal matters, not just a gut feeling, okay?
Counselor Delasola. We, we did, but this is debate on the motion. Counselor Delasola has the floor.
Just a comment, uh, Counselor Napolitano hit on what I was gonna comment on, but the other thing too, people don't realize, it's, they, they, when they have a competition, that's fine, but right now, you've got apples to oranges here. You don't have the same license and permits and all that for, to be apples for apples. Also, if you use this service, my daughter used it a few times, even with the Boston, it's $25 a gallon in Boston. But if they're real busy at midnight, the price goes up and up, as, as busy as they are. So just people out there using this service, just be careful when they do use this service. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Sachetta, I think you, you wanted to say something? Counselor Sachetta, you, you, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I want to first of all, uh, say that I would like to have Counselor Mangan as a sponsor, co-sponsor of this, and I would like to definitely send it to the city solicitor's office. So I make that motion and let's, uh, get a...
Second then.
All right, so we have, it's been moved in second to add Counselor Mangan as co-sponsor. All in favor? All opposed? You have so amended. On the pieces amended, it's been requested to add the communication and refer that, pieces number sixteen and twenty-four to the city solicitor's office. All in favor? All opposed? You have so moved. Clerk, read the next item of business. Item number seventeen, I believe it is.
Item number seventeen, committee on the whole on the budget report in order for FY 2016 city budget, the annual appropriation bill for fiscal year 2016, submitted by his honor the mayor, Conolly Maria, in the sum of one hundred and sixty-two million, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, ninety-nine dollars, we passed as amended by the committee by reducing two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars in the budget sum with a favorable recommendation thereby accepting the revised sum of a hundred and sixty-two million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars as the annual budget for the City of Everett, twenty, fiscal year 2016.
Accept the committee report. Fable action on the order as, uh, revised.
It's been moved in second to accept the committee report in favorable action as amended. Clerk, all in favor? Clerk, a call or roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezey.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sachetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, you have passed the order. Uh, clerk will read the next item of business, item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen, committee on the whole report on the public hearing report in accordance with section six dash four subsection A of the Everett City Charter, Everett City Council, scheduled a public hearing on the mayor's proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2016. The report was combined with the budget order.
Shall we make a motion to accept the communication and place it on file?
Second.
Moved in second to accept the committee report and place it on file. All in favor? All opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number nineteen.
Committee on Ways and Means report on resolution, the City of Everett considered offering early retirement incentive program similar to what state is proposing, with a recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Fable action, second.
Make a motion to refer back to sponsor. And just to accept the committee report.
It's been moved in second to accept the committee report and refer back to sponsor. All in favor? All opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number twenty.
Item number twenty, committee on the whole report to transfer three hundred thou- three hundred thousand dollars in budgetary fund balance into the master plan account to find a comprehensive master plan for the City of Everett.
Accept the committee report.
Fable action.
And favorable action on the order.
It's been moved in second to accept the committee port, report, favorable action. Uh, I believe we suspended Rule thirteen for the, I think we suspended it for the, for the evening, if that's the wish of the council. And we will, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezey.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sachetta.
No.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Ten ayes, one nay, Mr. President.
Ten ayes, one nay, you have passed the order. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number twenty-one.
Item number twenty-one, is resolution sponsored by Counsel Richard Delasola, the mayor's office report to city council's committee on government operations, public safety and public service, every three months on the progress of casinos surrounding areas, construction and traffic development.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes, can, um, may the chief of staff come up, please?
Second.
If we could please have the chief of staff before us.
Dave's answer. Hi, Melissa, thank you for being here. We're on, uh, piece number twenty-one, I don't have a chance to take a look at that.
Just like to have an update.
Sure, I think, uh, Dave is here, he may be a, a better person to give you an update since he's working on it.
If we could please have the assistant city solicitor before us.
I know they have, um, they did just have a public meeting this week on Tuesday, but we can fill you in more on it.
Mr. Assistant Solicitor, if you could please identify yourself for the record.
No. No assistant. Good evening, Dave Rodriguez, uh, Director of Gaming Accountability Development slash Assistant City Solicitor.
Many, a man of many hats.
I have to cover up my head in the summer, summertime somehow, so I wear lots of hats.
Hi, Dave, can we have an update of what's going on with the meetings and can we actually schedule, can you give us in advance when you would have these meetings?
Sure, the, the meetings are taking place the third Thursday of every month, um, in the Kavarian Room, so we're, we're doing that kind of on a regular rolling basis, um, so that we don't have to re-advertise, we're, we're putting that out on Facebook and we're putting it out via social media, but they, they do occur every third Thursday of every month. Um, they have been, uh, we had a couple people the first one, more people the second one, which we thinks, which we think is great progress. Um, their design is kind of informal conversations, we don't go in there with an agenda, we go in there with a bunch of maps and some plans, and we answer questions about what people have, we want them to have the best information. Um, from where we sit, misinformation or wrong information is worse than no information. So we want to be able to make sure that we're able to answer all, all the questions that anybody has. We, we had a great, uh, great talk for about, about an hour, um, last Thursday. Uh, we had lots of questions from folks who lived down the line and folks who lived throughout the city. We had some, some opponents show up to the project, um, and we worked through these issues and we worked through, when we answered questions about traffic and, you know, workforce development and, you know, urban renewal planning and kind of the broad spectrum issues, um, we're always available to answer the questions. We're gonna start expanding those outreach efforts, um, through the redevelopment of the Invision Everett website, envisioneverett.com. It's one of the, uh, tools we use to do public outreach during the pre-development process, during the licensing process. We're gonna revamp that entire website to, to really reflect the revitalization efforts that are going on, work with planning and development, work with my office to make sure that, you know, people can get the best information, they can pose questions. Uh, we're even gonna start using more innovative social media tools like Periscope, uh, which is, um, for those of you who don't, don't know, it's like a live YouTube that you can use via Twitter, um, to be able to, during those third Thursday meetings. Uh, so people who can't come can log on to Periscope and see those meetings and ask questions in, in real time. Uh, so it's like a video town hall that happens in real time, so we're excited about rolling out some, some innovative efforts, uh, when it comes to outreach.
Is there any way we can get that on the Everett channel, the people that don't have this?
Yeah, we do, we do it in the Kavarian Room, so there's no way for us to broadcast live. Uh, we can tape them, for sure. Uh, we can, uh, I'll, I'll kick it around to see if, uh, folks want to start having them in the chamber, um, with the, of course, the permission of the president, uh, for us to do it there. I, I'm not sure that this is a big room and I don't, I don't necessarily want to jeopard- and I don't want to take all the, take all the, take all the room that I, that I don't need, so. Um, the Kavarian Room, it's, it's working fine now, um, and we're excited about the efforts that we're gonna be using for outreach.
I just want to get the word out there.
Yeah.
You know, when, especially when the project starts, now it's just curiosity factor of what's going on, 'cause you look outside, nothing happening.
Well, that's the important part, and that's, that's real, the real important part that we're trying to get across is that although it might not look like a lot of stuff's happening, there's tons of stuff going on. Um, so I don't want people to think that we're just spinning our wheels and we're not, we're waiting for things to happen to us. The city's being very aggressive to make sure that as this is developed, uh, we have, we're, it's with the full support and full, and full involvement of the city, uh, at, at every level at which we have, which it's appropriate for us to be involved. Um, so if you, but just by way of update, um, Windmass LLC has applied for site plan approval, which is a very important step in terms of the development. Um, so Planning and Development is working with some outside consultants now to review all the plans, uh, which are available in, in DPD, to, uh, that, what the site looks like, how it's oriented, how people are gonna access the site, um, how traffic will flow onsite, and some of the other really important questions that are gonna be going on. Uh, we continue to have our weekly coordination meetings so that we can all get on the same page, uh, for the master plan, the master permitting process through MEPA. Um, that process, we're expecting the, uh, winds to file for, uh, their, their SS FEIR, their second supplemental final environmental impact report, um, at the beginning of July. Uh, the city is ready and willing to comment on that, um, in terms of the five conditions that Secretary Beaton has, has placed upon the, the conditional letter that he put to the SFIR. Uh, we've had regular meetings regarding Sullivan Square and what that means, uh, not just for the short term, uh, in, in relation to the project proper, uh, but also in the long-term planning efforts. The mayor has been very clear, um, that any planning that has to do with Sullivan Square, although it has to be mitigated, we have to mitigate the traffic at the casino, we also, there's a long-term vision for that. And Everett has a seat at that table, it needs to have a seat at that table, because it's a regional transportation hub, it's not just the city of Boston. And for the city of Boston to say, "This is our problem, we're gonna figure out how to solve it," and them do it their way without our input, that's not gonna work. Um, and we're being very vocal about, about that as, as we move forward. Um, we're continuing to, uh, evaluate consultants when it comes to, um, plan review and building permit issues. Uh, we're, we feel we're very, very close with that, and we're in the process of drafting an RFP for, uh, Transportation Infrastructure Improvement Consultant that would be brought on board to work with the city engineer.
All that has to be done before we do any work in a site?
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're working really hard. We're, we're anticipating, uh, people, people being able to see dump trucks and, and earth movers down in the site some, uh, sometime in September.
That was my next question. I'm gonna ask you that question every time you come up.
Good, I'm glad, yeah. They've got, well, from, from our understanding, Wind has gotten a very important piece of paper, which is, which, um, every project that, that's been built, whether it's a, a house or a, a large-scale development like this, has to be, is subject to Chapter 91, which is the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, so you can't build too close to the water, pretty much. So, uh, and what they've gotten assurances from, from DEP is that they can do their remediation without having a Chapter 91 license. It's a very, very, very important piece of paper that they've gotten, um, and it's a critical path that they've, so having that piece of paper in hand is huge for the project. So that just means remediation can, can begin all the sooner, um, and work in conjunction with MEPA and Chapter 91 and all these three million permits that we have to get, uh, and help them get and issue ourselves, um, as the project moves along.
And just one more question, when they start digging is when we receive some kind of money from...
Thirty days after, thirty days after a building permit is issued, uh, the city receives at least five million dollars. Okay, so. And that's the, that's the source of the, uh, Community Enhancement Fund, Stabilization Fund piece that was on the, before you tonight, and we're, we're happy to prepare a memo, um, to outline what that's all about and why the city's looking to do that as well.
All right, thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, Dave Rodriguez. Now, you say you have these meetings on a Thursday.
Third Thursday of every month.
Third Thursday of every month.
Six p.m. in the Kavarian Room.
But they're not televised.
They're in the Kavarian Room, so they're not televised, no.
Is there any possible way you could record it? I know, it doesn't have to be live.
We can tape it.
But if you can tape it, so that basically, sometimes you may have a, a meeting in But if you can tape it, so that, basically, sometimes you may have a, a meeting in there the third Thursday, we may have a committee meeting in there, and we're not able to make it.
Yeah.
So, at least, at least we can go on CTV, and we can watch it?
Yep.
And we don't have to spend six hours over here asking you questions that are already been answered.
Sure.
So, and, anything that goes on, like Counselor Delasola said, he wants to report every three months.
Yeah.
I believe it should be automatically go to committee and ask the questions in committee.
That's fine, yeah.
During a regular council meeting, because there's, we have way too much to, that's going on.
Sure.
So, but at the same time, I would like to see them televised. I know you can't do it live.
Yeah, I think, just, just in terms of how we structure the meetings, as kind of informal conversations, and literally just us sitting around a table, talking about the project, and talking about people's thoughts on the project, I don't think that necessarily lends itself to being televised.
No.
But I'm happy to organize one every three months, to be consistent with, with Counselor Delasola's piece that's on the calendar, to do a more formalized meeting every quarter, to update folks. That's, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Hannon.
Thank you. You mentioned that September, roughly, they may be doing cleanup down there.
Yep.
So, we're not going to see no money then. We're going to see money when they actually pull the building permit?
Well, eh, on this project specifically, you're not going to see, it's not like a smaller-scale project where you come in with plans and issue the building permit, you start building right away. We're going to receive plans, we're going to have a number of day, a number of weeks to review those plans, and work out issues that are with the plans, depending on, and it's the first building permit. And it's important to recognize the fact that there will probably be a couple dozen building permits for different phases of the projects, as it moves along. The core and shell, the foundation, the parking garage, once that first issue permit is issued, that means they, they can proceed. That might not work with their calendar, but they can proceed, and that's when, that's when the clock starts ticking on the Community Enhancement Fund.
Okay, thank you.
So, as soon, and as soon as that's updated, I'm sure the mayor would want to, as soon as that happens, I'm sure the mayor would want to update you.
Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to Mr. Rodriguez. Dave, whatever it is, whether it's the fall, or sometime next year, whenever, you know, we, the, the permit is issued, and then you said if the five million comes into the bank, I know the additional two years is twelve point five, and a twelve point five million. Do they come on the anniversary? Let's just say as an example, let's say it's, I just wrote a date out, let's say it's January first, next year, that the permit is issued, and shortly after that, the, the city gets its five million. Is it the two years subsequent to that, that we actually received the twelve point five?
You're exactly right. It's on the one-year anniversary of us receiving the first payment. So, and it's, the way that the agreement was structured, we tried to build in flexibility in every case, in every possible eventuality we could. So, it's five million dollars upfront, five million dollars upfront, and then on or before the first anniversary, we get twelve point five, and then on or before the second anniversary, we get another twelve point five. That's nothing saying that if the city has, you know, something going on, and the mayor wants to request in advance on that money, he can certainly do so. And they're, they're not obligated to do that, but they're able to.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Speaking of the.
Seeing that, Mr. Congressman, thanks.
Thank you.
On the piece, Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll, I'm, I'm pleased. I'll send this back to sponsor.
Moving second, refer item number twenty-one back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, refer it back to sponsor. Clerk Reed, item number twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two is resolution sponsored by Counselor Richard Delasola, City Service Director, appear this meeting to explain why contractors leave equipment on the streets overnight.
Counsel Delasola.
They couldn't make it here tonight. There's a letter sent to us.
A letter from Julius Offrey. I just sort of received this letter as response to the resolution regarding contractors leaving equipment on city streets overnight, as specified in item forty, Resolution CO-102-15. We advise all ongoing construction contractors to remove all vehicles within the right of way after the completion of their work. The work entails removal and replacement of underground piping for immediate use. They will be forced to obtain a permit for street occupancy and provide a reasonable traffic management plan to the engineering office and the traffic commission for approval. This will be viewed on a day-to-day basis, day-to-day based decision, and will strictly enforce no construction vehicle stored overnight on the residential streets during weekends. Please feel free to contact me if need further information. Respectfully, Julius Offrey.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'm going to send this back to sponsor also, but for the people watching, if does not, this does not happen at the residence in front of their house. If anybody's doing work, please call me and let me know. Or any other counselors, if it's in their mind.
Second.
Thank you.
Move the communication and refer back to sponsor. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have so moved. Clerk Reed, the next item of business, item number twenty-three.
Item number twenty-three, Mr. Chairman, resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael Mangan to honor the mayor and the city solicitor, appear this meeting to discuss the power plant tax situation in South Everett.
Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke with the city solicitor earlier in this meeting about the situation. I know we can't really go into it tonight and discuss it. So, and there's some other information that we're trying to gather at this time. So, what I'd like to do, if it's possible, I know we have the meeting in August, I forget what the date is, Mr. President, if you?
I think it's August twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. What I'd like to do, if it's possible, that night, by six o'clock, have a committee of the whole to make it convenient for everybody, so people don't have to put in some, some special meeting during the summer, but the twenty-fourth, if we could have a committee meeting on the hall, possibly at six, pick six PM that night, and invite the solicitor, the mayor, and then also, if there's, you know, any attorneys or things like that, that may be working on this case for the city, to come in and explain it to us in, in executive session. What I'd like to do is a committee in the hall, so everybody's here, so everybody's here, and has a chance to ask questions in executive session.
So, if I have it correct, you want to have a committee of the whole, six PM, on August twenty-fourth, before our council meeting, inviting the solicitor, the mayor, and then whomever else we may need, whoever they think would be proper folks to come and speak. You wanted to do that in the executive session?
Yes. Yes, because I believe there's ongoing negotiations.
Wait, 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 wait. Yeah, I think, I think what we would do is we'd call the meeting, and then at that point in time, if anything sensitive came up, then we could make.
Then that's fine, we could do that.
So, the motion before us, unless there's any other debate on it, would be to have a committee of the whole for August twenty-fourth at six PM, invite the city solicitor, the mayor, and any other guests they think may be helpful to them for the purposes of that meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have so moved. Clerk Reed, the next item of business, item number twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Lee McKinnon, autism rights coordinator, Sean Coyle, and Teresa, appear this meeting to speak about next year's event.
Refer this to the Government Operations, Public Safety, Public Service Committee.
Second.
It's moving second to refer this to Public Safety, Government Regulations Committee. On the piece, we have discussion, Counsel Hannon.
Chairman, on, on these types of things, where we send them to committee, I, I think from now on, what we have to do, is we have to ask the committee what we would like it to do, because I, I don't want the, the committee to come out and say, "Well, you know, the other councils weren't invited to that committee," whatever committee it was, "but if those councils now have anything that they want to say to add on to that, they should do it now, so that when it comes back to us, we can accept the committee report without saying, 'Well, we went there.'" So, if anyone wants to add anything to that, I have nothing to add to it, but if anyone would like to add to it, that, what they want the committee to do, now's the time to do it.
Excellent point, Counsel. You want, you want to provide direction to the committee, because oftentimes, we've got different personnel that are out there and here, and if the committee knows exactly what it is the sponsor's looking for, then it makes it more helpful and productive in committee. Is there, is there anything in particular?
I can, I can give that up right now, if you would like it.
If, if you're prepared to, otherwise, you provide something.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to have them come before the committee. They're going to give their financial reports, what they received, and what they also put out, or what they plan to put out, and they will give it, they, they can actually give copies to all of us, at that point. Also, also, they're going to actually look for a date for next year's event, and they're, they're trying to set it up as we speak right now. So, this is why it was important to actually have us on, so.
If we could do that, that would be.
Second motion.
That's what I'm going to look for.
So, the direction, Counselor, is to obtain the general information, and then more specifically, set up a date.
General financial, and set up a date.
Yes, and set up a date for next year's event. Okay. Thank you, Counselor. It's been moving second to refer to committee, seeking that information. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, it's been referred to committee. Clerk Reed, the next item of business, item number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six, resolution sponsored by Counsel Salvatore Sacchetta to have gate leading to Air Force Road open, so that citizens can drive to the content of Park and Lot and the Seven Acre Park. Any person who wants to go to the park has to enter from Metlin English Park and Lot, and that is a small pathway going down an incline, which is somewhat dangerous. Also, it would allow every resident to get to Revere Beach Parkway when the streets, the circles are at a traffic jam, which also creates a traffic jam on Main Street.
Counsel Sacchetta.
Yes, this park was made up back when John Hanlon was mayor of the city. We took the, we took the pile of dirt from Glendale Park, where we put the high school, and we dumped it down there. Maybe it was Mayor Ragucci at the time, but John Hanlon was there when we finished it, I believe. But the fact is, this park has been there for some eight years. The only one that uses these parks, and I've seen it, because I live on the street with, with the pathway going in, is a park for dogs. We spent hundreds of dollars putting bricks in there, commemorating people that want to be memorized. We have flagpoles there, we have a wall there, and we're using it as a dog park. I would love to go down that park at right at the end of my street, and I'd like to walk around that pathway and get some exercise. But I have to go down a dirt pathway, and at my age, I'm liable to fall on my rear end. So, I'd like to drive down into a parking lot, which is there. And this, this road is on Tremont Street, where the gate is, and you can drive in within two minutes from my home, park your car, and go to the park. This gate's been opened, closed, opened and closed. Beyond that, this road could also be used to alleviate traffic on Main Street. Now, I understand from some persons that stated the reason this gate is closed, because there's a pipeline there, and we're not allowed to cross it. I've seen trucks bigger than ten tons cross that area to get, to get dirt in and out of there. I've seen trucks parked there. So, I can't understand why this gate is closed. I'd love to go and send this to the mayor, and get that gate open, so we could use this park. Thank you very much.
Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to the good Counsel Sacchetta. My recommendation would be, is that maybe sometime in the summer, Counsel, if we could have a, possibly, we can work with the school department, maybe, because it's in that area, the matter lining the school, and getting the residents from all down in that area to come and have a meeting, like an, an open discussion about, you know, some of these concerns that you may have, whatever. And I think would be for, we may take action either way, to at least get the concerns of the residents down there, to see what, what they're actually looking for, so, because we know that a complex is, that big complex is going to be opening up pretty soon down there. But I think at least to get the, the information from what the people that live on Yar Street, and Everett Street, and all those other streets, Prescott Street, I think that would be a good idea, in my personal opinion, before we move forward either way, and make a decision either way, just to make, make sure that, you know, everybody's in, on the same page down there, you know. But maybe we can work something at that, if we have it right in the neighborhood, at the school, possibly in the cafeteria, or something like that, sometime in the summer, I think that would be a great, a great, an idea, like I said, to get the input of the residents.
Counsel Sadi.
Thank you. I did have this piece on two months ago, and Jamie Erickson spoke in front of us counselors, and did state that we could not go over the road because of the gas lines underneath. I am working with Mr. Souza, because Jamie Erickson left, that we are trying to work on, trying to see what we can do to open the gate, and also, maybe even what is av, maybe, maybe have something open for the residents of Everett to use, to utilize that. But that's in the works, so we're not sure yet what they're going to be able to do. But they are working on it.
Counsel Sacchetta, would you want to refer this to the mayor's office in Planning and Development, or did you want to speak more on it?
Well, I think the mayor has the authority to open that gate, so I'd like to have it go to the mayor's office. If he has a problem with it, he could come back and explain it to us. So, I still would like to have it go to the mayor's office.
Okay.
Thank you.
And whereas, if I may from the chair, whereas Counsel Sadi had mentioned that Mr. Souza's working on this as well, would you like to refer it to his office as well, Planning and Development?
Fine, that's okay with me, sure.
Counsel DeFlorio.
In the meantime, if there's a problem with the issue of going over there because of a gas pipe, why can't we just open a small gate, so Counsel Sacchetta can at least walk down there?
Oh, he don't want to fall down.
Just a small, a, a small gate for people to walk through, not drive through.
Sure, sure. All right, so, the, the motion, Counsel Hannon.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, just some information. You know, if you go through that gate, and you take a left to go on Air Force Road, you're driving over private property. Not Air Force Road, Air Force Road starts down farther. Right now, Boston Coach owns that property. They don't want anybody on there. The, as a matter of fact, the, there's only like seven parking spaces in that, in that spot. If you go to the left, you have to go onto Boston Coach's property. I think what the mayor should do is to negotiate with them to get us to be able to park, to park, to park in there, you know, because it's, they don't want you to go in there, and they will never allow traffic to come off of Main Street and go down through there to get out to, to Santilli Highway. And that's their business, you're driving right through their backyard. So, that's, that's the problem that's, that was that pole problem that was down there. And tried several times to do that, not only me, but other people, and they just didn't want to hear it. So, maybe they might have changed their mind, you know, and they might let us go down there now, because I know the, the property itself has got some real development going on down there. And so, maybe there's a different, something different is going on down there. And maybe we can get it, but I think it's got to be negotiated with Boston Coach. So, if it's referred to the mayor, I would also like to add on that the mayor negotiates with Boston Coach to get that passageway cleared for us.
Is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
It's been moved second to amend the piece to add Boston Coach as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The piece itself, Counsel Simonelli.
Yes, I agree with Counsel Sacchetta on it. It's a part here where they have the, years ago, we used to cut, it was a cut through from Tremont Street to the, the pathway. It just seemed to add, add more traffic to their situation. So, I don't think that's, I don't know how they're going to rectify that, but once, if they open that road, and people are just going to touch through like they did years ago, and it's just going to create more, more problems. So, thank you.
So, the piece before us has been moved second to refer this item to the mayor, Planning and Development, and request that they consider negotiating with Boston Coach as well. All in favor?
If I could add to, with a response at our next meeting. We need a, we need a response back.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. So, we'll go, we'll take it from the top. It's been moved in second to refer this to the mayor's office, Planning and Development, to request that they consider negotiating with Boston Coach, parking purposes, with a request for response at our next meeting in August. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have so moved. Clerk Reed, the next item of business, item number twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven is resolution sponsored by Counsel DeFlorio, Counsel Sadi, and Counsel Delasola, that the mayor and city auditor come up with a figure on how much money we could take out of free cash to offset the increase in the FY twenty sixteen budget, and report back first regular meeting in September.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, we've got the bad news that our city auditor is not going to be here, and it's very sad news, and I wish the two hundred thousand that we cut off the budget we could give to him, to keep him here, because he's very valuable.
Would that work, Rich? Would that work for you?
He'll stay very flattered.
But in this case, what we're trying to do here is, we understand that everything goes up. Unfortunately, it's your cable bill, your electric bill is thirty-seven percent. Everything goes up. The point that we're trying to make is, and I know that free cash is not certified at the moment, but when free cash is certified, I'd like for the administration to do, to do some work, to see if we can get some of the free cash, to put it towards the tax, the taxes, to cover the fiscal year, the increase of the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget. So, that the taxes don't go up, make it level funded. Now, obviously, there's going to be a little more work done to that, but that's where the auditor comes in, because we have to make sure, number one, that it can be done. Number two, we have to make sure that it's the right thing to do, that we don't suffer far with the following year, because it's really not, that's not the right way financially to do business. But on a one-time deal, where the mayor had said that we're having a lot of growth coming in, in hotels and so on, maybe this would be great for the taxpayer at this time, not to see an increase. So, I'd like to refer this to, I guess I have to refer it to the mayor's office, with, and answer back. Now, unfortunately, it won't be September, because free cash doesn't get certified until November. So. Whenever free cash is certified.
Yeah.
Okay. Response, whenever free cash is certified.
Second.
Thank you.
I have Counsel Appleton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I, I agree with the spirit of this, and definitely was involved with this, as much as I've been this year, were to, to pin down a commitment from the mayor to cut the budget. But I thought we also got, I thought we got clarification at the last budget hearing, too, that there's a reason why they can't do this, this quickly. I mean, there's a reason why, when we set the budget in May-June, that we don't set the tax rate until toward the end of the year. And that's because you've got to certify free cash, you have property valuations, you also have to look and see what they're getting back from the state. So, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great idea, but it's about four months, four to five months too early. Now, referring it to the mayor's office, just as a, you know, to, as a reminder, I'm, I have no problem with that. But we're not going to get an answer in September, we're not going to get an answer in October. I think the city auditor made it clear to us at the budget hearing meeting, that there are other things that have to be done first, before we come close to establishing a tax rate, so then we can identify what we need to offset that for the taxpayers. So, just having said that, as long as we're not trying to look for an answer prematurely, before these other steps have to be taken, I think it's just important to remember, these other things have to be done first, before the city can come back and say how much from free cash can be applied.
Sure. Counsel DeFlorio.
We, we, we all understand that. We've all been around the block for a while, we understand the finances of the city, but when you have a good auditor, as good as Richard Biscay, I'm sure he could put the figures together right now, if he wanted to.
We're not going to do that to you, Rich.
Unfortunately, he's leaving, and, and that's why I said, when the free cash gets certified. Okay?
Second.
Specifically. Thank you.
Motion on the floor, it's been moved in second to refer this to the mayor's office, requesting a response when free cash is certified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have so referred. Clerk Reed, the next item of business, item number twenty-eight.
Item number twenty-eight, resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael J. Mangan, to solicit or appear next meeting to discuss legality of texting while driving in the city of Everett.
Refer it to the.
Next meeting.
Okay, everyone, everyone chill out, relax, relax. Nobody has the floor yet. Counsel Mangan, you now have the floor. You can do what you like.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It's state law, but I want to get an official thing from our city solicitor, come up and explain it, which is also, the reason I brought this up is that, and she needs a little bit more time, but the fact is, I had several residents not only grab me in the street, but call me at my house. A few of them almost got into near accidents because of people, everyone's texting, they're running through red lights, they're running through stop signs, crosswalks, everything. And it's, and you can see it out there, whether it's talking or texting, but especially the texting, because you're taking your head off the road. And like I said, the thing is, is that I just wanted her to come up, if she has to explain the law, how the law is. But I do have some people at that meeting that want to come up, I think in the public forum, public hearing thing at the beginning, and want to speak about and talk about some particular incidents. So, out of respect to them, like I said, I'd like to give them the chance to come up in front of us, our constituents to come up in front of us in August, in our meeting in August, explain their situations, have their city solicitor explain what the rules and regulations are, and then, you know, we can move on from there, either way.
So, we put this to the.
So, you're looking to, you're looking?
Yes.
Okay.
Looking to refer it to the.
Last time I checked, I was in the chair. All right, so what we're going to do, the motion on the floor is to refer this to our next meeting in August. Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
So, moving second to refer item number twenty-eight to our meeting in August. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved. We have next item, number twenty-nine.
Item number twenty-nine, resolution sponsored by Counsel Peter Appleton and Counsel Michael Marquez, that the awning ordinance be reviewed for amendments by the Legislative Affairs Committee.
Counsel Appleton.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, this, we, we've had this conversation in our past few meetings regarding the, the awnings, and I think we have identified that we do have a few issues in there that we should revisit to make some amendments, make it a little more comprehensive.[1707.33] So I would like to refer this to Legislative Affairs.
Is there a second? Moving second to refer Legislative Affairs, on the piece, Counsel Hamlin.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I need to ask, I'm referring to Legislative Affairs, what are we expecting the Legislative Affairs Committee to do with this?
To be reviewed for amendments to the Legislative Affairs, that's it. They are gonna make amendments.
Review, review amendments on the existing...
Yes.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved in second to refer this item to Legislative Affairs, requesting a revision of the existing awning regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved. Clerk Reed, the next item, number thirty.
Item number thirty, resolution sponsored by Counsel Peter Napal Town, that the ever police consider equipping the officers with body cameras.
Counsel Napal Town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this has been a lot, this has been in the news, read, the past several months, regarding different incidents. You know, the, I saw a piece on, last week on TV from the city of Methuen, that has incorporated these, a couple interviews, a few with the officers. I mean, they're looking at not only the ability of being able to keep, be able to provide stronger evidence, but it also keeps everybody on their toes. So that's why here, officers don't make mistakes, and officers are also backed up, you know? The, one of the, one of the comments that were made by the city solicitor of Methuen, was that they're looking at saving money on their, on a lot of their legal costs outside, when a, you know, when, when they have to send an officer back to court. So I mean, I, there's, there's a lot of different things to it. You know, I, I'd like the police chief's opinion, I'd like the city solicitor's opinion, so what I'd like to do is, and also I'd like to get at your cost. So I'd like to refer this to Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service, with an invitation to invite the police chief, procurement officer, the city solicitor, and let, let's talk about this a little bit. You know, this is a trend that's going on in, in law enforcement nationally. Let's not wait till late, the city's going through some adjustments, going through some changes. You know, if, if we can prepare ourselves when our, our traffic flow is larger with the casino and things of this nature, you know, our officers, I think we'd better protect it when they, when they're called on to do their job. Because it's not always what they, it's not always a situation where they have to pull out their weapons. It's a situation they have to go and defend their, their decisions in court. And having the, the recording, having the incident or the arrest, whatever, you know, televised or recorded, we give our officers an additional tool in the field.
Okay, so Counsel, the motion is to refer this to Government Operations, Public Safety, inviting the city solicitor, procurement officer, and the police chief, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a second on that?
Second, second.
Okay. On the piece, we've got Counsel McKinnon next.
On, on the piece, I'd also like, recommend that we have the member from their union there as well, so we can have both sides. And, and maybe a fiscal reporter on how much these devices would cost, and, and see if they would be cost effective if in fact we did go that way. But I would like the union there as well.
Okay, so we're looking to amend to invite a representative from the union as well. Moving second to amend on the amendment itself, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It has been amended. Next person on the list is Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm all said, my question was answered the same as Counsel McKinnon.
Counsel DeFlorio.
I just want, on regards to sending the stuff to committee, I, I hope we know that we're not meeting in the summer, so if we call committee meetings, there might not be a quorum. Because we're basically telling the counselors, we're not meeting, you can go on vacation. So, my recommendation is that these committees, I don't know if the body would, would agree, that these committees would be starting in August, the first week in August.
I would, I would imagine our clerk could, clerk committees could coordinate that.
Yeah.
But Counsel Napal Town.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, to that, to that piece, last summer, we had a significant amount of committee meetings. I mean, the, the question came out that we'd take the summer off, but I think most of us will agree, we met more last summer each month than we do on a normal basis. So, this government doesn't stop, okay? And if we're able to schedule committee, we have a forum, we move forward on the piece.
So the piece before us is moving second to refer this to Government Operations, Public Safety, inviting the city solicitor, procurement officer, police chief, and a member from the union representative. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Before we adjourn, from, from the chair, I would, I would like to extend our, our best wishes to Mr. Biscay. Hopefully that, you know, wherever he heads on to, he's successful, as successful as he's been here. We will miss you, we do appreciate all of the, the advice and the patience and the information you've provided over the years. And, you know, we have been the beneficiaries of that in the city. You will be a big loss, you will be missed, and we wish you well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have adjourned.